Right, we called it Monday, September twenty fifth, two thousand twenty three meeting in the Bethlehem County, where the order. Seven thirty five P M. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in section three D of chapter two thirty one of public laws of nineteen seventy five. Finally, now the sunshine law. We're all called this.
Paul here. Uh, Jose Reyes.
Here.
Judy Nelson.
Here.
Ray San Kelly.
Here.
Ryan Messinger.
Here.
Jose Maderas.
Here.
Philip Bellin. Brad Nelson.
Here.
Ken Chalet.
Here.
Jeff Paletti.
Here.
Steve Di Lorenzo.
Here.
Daniel McDonald. Tom. Oh, Tom Decker.
Here.
Kara.
Okay. And press the question. I plan to leave this to the slide. I give it six.
Flashing nation. Even small.
Just raw. The open is public for agenda subject comments. Move.
Second.
Pause the favor. Any public comment on the agenda?
You know, there's Teresa on the radio. Yeah, it's all good. Yeah, that's a yeah.
Teresa. Is that the most.
Yeah, some raised hand. Nope, it's the curse of Indian. Yes. New world for twenty four Charleston Road. So on the tree ordinance, do you have a copy for us for the amended, uh, what you're gonna amend?
Uh, right now it's a discussion topic. It's a proposed application. I don't know.
No, 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 the tree application.
The tree ordered, the tree ordered application.
Oh.
The permit for.
The main permit application.
Discuss if you have a hard copy for us. Now, if I go minute copies, you know.
It hasn't been approved by the board yet. I know we're gonna discuss it tonight. Um, if the board satisfied with it and, uh, wants to recommend it to be used by the governing body, we certainly can provide it at that point.
Okay, so, okay. All right, so we'll work outside and then, um.
So the public doesn't have access to it then, to the.
Well, right now, it's still a working form, it's still just working.
Can you just then at least when you get to it summarize what the differences are?
Absolutely.
Okay. Are we not working on the tree ordinance? No, I understand. I totally understand. Thank you.
Need a motion to close? Remove second. Put it there. Hey. Right, so we have public hearing for twenty twenty three. For block thirty six, lot twelve, lot twelve of the lot. All right. Uh, the applicant. Come on up here just to say your name. And we've got to go through the zone.
Lynn Robinson.
Lynn Robinson. Um, all right, Kara.
Then Chris Robinson.
Evening, everybody. Um, we wanted to, uh, first of all, just talk about the notification requirements. It's my understanding that, uh, notice was not provided to the adjacent property owners within two hundred feet of your property. And since this is a minor subdivision application that involves a variance, uh, that type of notice does need to be done in addition to the notification in the newspaper. So this board doesn't have jurisdiction to hear your application unless that is done. And also, you could expose yourself potentially to an objector filing an appeal of your application. So making sure that the notice requirements are satisfied, uh, helps both the board protect both the board and you. Uh, that being said, we could definitely explain to you what needs to be done. We also need to add another lot into the notification and two hundred foot list because it looks like based on the review of the plans that the easement that serves lot eleven is also part of this application. So we need to incorporate that into it. Uh, but that being said, uh, and, and the chair will talk a little more about this. But, uh, we do know that you are interested in moving forward with everything. And there are some comments that the board engineer, uh, as well as the board planner may have to give you. So what I've recommended is that an applicant has the ability to appear before a board for a conceptual discussion of what they're proposing, as long as it does not require a use variance. Uh, you don't need a use variance here. You have a minor subdivision with this C variance, uh, for that pre-existing condition. So we can have this discussion with the board and the board professionals. And I think that would be helpful here because there is a lot going on. We have the subdivision, we have the easement relocation. We have an issue where this proposed subdivision is going to create a split zone lot, which is typically disfavored according to the municipal land use law. In fact, boards are encouraged to do away with and prevent any sort of conditions. Again, according to New Jersey state law, so I think that these are things that it might be helpful for you to talk through. While we, you then complete the notice that you would need to in order to have your actual public here.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm Mary Mott, I'm Lynn's sister. I just wanted to do the original subdivision. Um, and I'm just here because I have more of the history because I did the original subdivision creating these two lots thirty years ago. I don't understand where the variance comes in here because we're not. The lots are two lots are totally conforming and the setbacks are all conforming. Um, so why is there a need for variance?
So I can let Tom explain to you that. I believe the, uh, Karen, Karen, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the variance, um, comes in with existing non-conforming. Um, uh, frontage. On lot, uh, twelve point oh one. I'm reading that correctly. Right, and since, since the lot is being modified, correct, and they're changing the lot configuration, that non-conformity needs to be the variance. Correct.
But we're increasing the size of the lot, not decreasing it, the one that's non-conforming. If, if it is true, I mean, that that lot was conforming when it was created thirty years ago. I understand it is now non-conforming because of the change in the zoning. I would also like to mention that originally, thirty years ago, when I did the original subdivision, there was a, there was a two acre lot. As you know, normal road is all two acre lots. My property, original property was thirteen acres, had the next, the vacant lot right next door, which is basically where her driveway did. Was purchased just before I, my father passed away, and I got rid of that two acre lot and then created the five acre lot. At that point in time, everything was conforming and it was approved. Um, what we're doing now is, I understand, there's a variance, if you would, because it's a pre-existing, now it's a pre-existing non-conforming lot, but we're not decreasing the size of that lot. We're increasing the size of that lot. We're not changing anything at the front of the lot, which is where the neighbors are. All we're doing is changing the rear of the lot.
And, and I think, I'm sorry, can I have your name again? I missed it.
Uh, Mary Mott, Mary Mott Kosh.
Okay, thank you so much. Uh, I, I do think that everything you're saying is correct. And they would all be very good reasons for why the board would grant this minimal variance that they're asking for. But unfortunately, it doesn't change the statutory requirement where the land use law specifically says that a minor subdivision requiring a variance requires notice. So, you know, please don't, don't take this requirement to mean that, uh, it, you don't have justification for it. It's just something that, again, exposes both the board and the applicant to an appeal if we don't deal with properly. And that's certainly nothing that, uh, we would want to have happen.
Well, beyond the legal notice, what notice do you need? Because all the neighbors know that we're doing this.
Well, we have to give it. Certified letter to have everybody within.
Certified letter, and there's a receipt that they sign, which is then returned to us, which then just shows that, that they haven't received it. If, if anybody along the, the way basically said that, I mean, they could verbally said anything to you, but there's no proof of that. And so down the road, someone could say, well, I didn't know. And you could very well say, well, you told me it was okay, but there's no proof of that.
We didn't have a publication in the newspaper and had to provide proof of publication.
And in the application package, you have a two hundred foot property owners list. So in, in, in that application, that's, that's for the tax catcher. That, that gives you the names and addresses of all those properties within that two hundred foot, uh, new zone. Um, so the, the other, um, thing that we can discuss is, and as a board, um, you know, we are reexamining our, our best plan right now. And this is kind of at, at a time that, that we're looking at, at zones. And then what, you know, what can be done in zones? What, um, what, what properties are encompassing in, you know, in, in, in certain zones? What we're looking at, at doing is bringing more conformity versus lack of conformity. So you, you have two different zones here. You have your mountain residential zone, okay? Which is five acre zoning and then your R one five, which is one point five acres. Um, and we're basically split right there. And so we're gonna have a, a non-conformity. And the municipal land use law, um, looks at, at, at us not making new conformities, if anything, over time, getting rid of all those non-conformities. So we don't want to basically put something together where we're gonna go against our own zoning right now by just changing the law. Um, if both these were not residential, I think it'd be very, very easy. But we're in a split zone, so that's just something else that we're looking at.
Yeah, and I don't, I'm just, and, and, and I don't understand why I've ever ended up that way because while the original the, my old house, my old house was the original house.
Lot twelve.
Was which is the one that we're looking to decrease in size, that property when I inherited, it was fifteen acres. That was the original farmhouse that the normal road development came out. But because of its conform, you know, the, the, to practice, you know, they, they kept that as a larger lot. And the rest of the normal road is the one and a half and two acre lot sizes. I mean, I understand, and I don't understand how ever these two lots became the different zones. And I assume it was because of the one and a half or two acre lot that I got rid of back in nineteen ninety one. When I did that original subdivision back in nineteen ninety one, we created lot twelve point oh one, the bigger piece, um, the one they're looking to increase here now. Like I said, originally, there was a tiny little lot, the last vacant lot of the normal road development, which we got rid of. That would have been another house on a very small lot, which was not a practice. Um, and thirty years ago, perhaps they should have fixed this zoning. But we have no problem with you changing the zoning for these lots at this point in time to both mountain residential because that's what we are, you know, doing in both those lots would be conforming under mountain residential of with respect to size.
So you both, both, both lots with the, the fours, um. So they're, they're both gonna be greater than the five acres required.
Yes.
Um, so you are, so the R one point five. So the R one five, with the exception of lot frontage, would mean not residential. That's the case. So.
And, you know, with respect to the change in the frontage, I mean, it just doesn't work with the way these lots are configured, with their septic system is on lot twelve. Um, if we try to change the lot lines, we're gonna be getting too close to the septic system on lot twelve. They've been this way for thirty years with the frontage. It's in conformity with the neighborhood. I mean, you realize these are five acre lots or eighteen, it's gonna be however many acres the new one's gonna be, in a development of one and a half acre, two acre ones. And we certainly would have provided the notice to them, you know, if we were told ahead of time. With all due respect, we've been back and forth with the surveyor a bunch of times and all this, and we're just trying to get it done so we can. My sister wants to sell that house to the people who live in there for a long time. They want to buy it because they want to do improvements. We're getting into bad winter, you know, time of the year to do improvements.
An extra, maybe you can hire the surveyor after he's so good.
Same time there, yeah.
Survey this property. Is there any other reason on that we can? Is there another option? That, um, that would.
Well, is it for, for the section that you're looking for, you know, car bulk of a lot? Is it basically because you want to make sure that that doesn't get developed and if one wanted to stay?
Yeah, and in fact, when I did the subdivision thirty years ago, I believe I agreed as part of that subdivision, there'd be no further subdivision of these lots, okay? That's my agree, understanding thirty years ago when I did it. I'm sorry, I'm stepping in here, but I'm alone with the history. The fact of the matter is, the reason we're doing what we're doing is because the way her house is set up. When I gave her the five acres to build her house, looking out of her picture window is the backfield and the pond. We want to preserve that as her front yard. The main people who are buying the new, the house, my, my old house, my brother's old house, they don't care about backfield, but the backfield is basically her front yard. So when I originally did the original subdivision, I lived in that house. I have horses. I wasn't gonna give my sister any more than I needed to, okay? I'm sorry, it wasn't very nice of her. I just, I just wanted to give, you know, I did the five acres because that was the zoning for them. And that's all I wanted to give her. Now that things are changing, you know, she actually bought, if you look at the whole thing, my father would be so pleased because when my father bought the original pieces, like, oh, there's all this land up there, we can all live up there. She now owns the whole, all of it, you know, she just bought the last eleven acres a couple of years ago. It, it's all one big, nice, happy piece back there for her. The farmhouse that we want to sell to the tenants, it's in a hollow, it's the way it's configured. This is actually, if you looked at the lots, this, the lot lines as we're proposing them, works with the configuration, the topography and everything. We're just doing this so she keeps the pond and she keeps her front yard.
So it's a matter of keeping that as the, because one of the things I was gonna mention was, you know, if it was a matter of keeping, making sure that nothing ever happened there.
No, yeah, and it, and it wouldn't be.
But it, it into a conservation, that's not, that doesn't sound.
And it's not sub, it's not gonna be subdivided anyway, but the highlands and the steep slope and all the rest of it, you know.
No, no, it's not. You're right, it can't be sub, be subdivided.
And, um, and nobody would be, be able to, you know, the people in my old house, even if they kept the field, they probably couldn't do anything back there because of the access with the wetlands to get across, you know. It's, it's basically a hay field.
Right. Um, and yes, you know, typically, you know, changing zone lines and everything like that, especially in an application like this, sometimes can be considered spot zoning. Okay, um. And I have to defer to Kara on this and Megan, her, her planner. Um, both blocks with the exception of the frontage on normal road. The frontage on normal road is not, um, uh, does not conform to the MR, so it also currently doesn't conform to the, to the four, one point five. And wherever both lots satisfy the, the lot area. Typically, when you're spot zoning, you're changing something for the benefit of someone. Um, and again, I'm just kind of shooting from the hip here, it's really more of a legal and planning issue. But if you were to rezone it, rezone the one point five acre portion to MR, where you're going from a.
Small, a lot smaller to a larger.
Or, or dense zone to a less dense zone. And you're actually putting more constraints on the property as far as it has to be a known lot size. That might be more palatable from a, a, a planning and legal standpoint than if per se you were gonna say, all right, well, we're gonna rezone the MR to one point five, and now you've made the lot area smaller and everything. Um, so that might be one way of, of looking at it. I don't know, Kara, do you have any thoughts on that?
I mean, obviously, spot zoning is a concern. We can't do that. There are options for expanding the boundary line of a zone. So it's not really a zone change, it's more of a boundary line change, but obviously that's not within the purview of this board. Um, the, the other thought I was having is we're kicking this around. And I do think this is definitely very helpful so we can have all these issues addressed before the public hearing in addition to the easement issue that I want to make sure we cover as well. Um, but i- if I'm thinking about including a third lot in there, the only problem, so basically taking the, the lot that's in the R, R one five zone, taking the balance of that lot that's in the MR and creating that as a separate lot, along with the lot that they want to sell. The only problem I have or issue with that is then you're creating essentially a landlocked parcel. Um, and then we may have a, we certainly could provide for access by way of an access easement. Um, I don't know, that's another possibility. So that's kind of the only other thing I could think of to create something.
Then why would, with all due respect, why would you want to do that? Because then you're creating a lot that ultimately might be sellable and developable in the future, which is not, you know, what we're looking to do here, I mean, we have no problem taking this lot that we are making from five acres to eleven, whatever it's gonna be. It, that's not gonna be, you know, and keep in mind, she has another eleven acres behind her and she owns my mother's four and a half acres. It, none of this is gonna be ever developable or subdivided in the future, including the eleven acres she bought, which is landlocked up around her because of highlands, because of steep slope. I mean, if you saw the topography of this property, it's, it's not under the Highlands Act ever gonna be able to be developable or subdivided. Um.
But, uh, what, what we're trying to.
And, and I understand about the zoning issue.
I mean, we're, we're just trying to, if we were to create, um, a parcel now that would just split zoned. So the new law will be half mountain residential and half MR one five.
And, and to two lots.
And then, and then at what point, somebody else down the road, you know, as, as, as we say, everybody sells the properties, well, and now there's a new owner. And they want to put a deck up. Well, what rules are they following?
Well.
Are they gonna follow? Because again, mountain, mountain, mountain residential has different bulk requirements than the R one five. And so actually someone's gonna come in and, and say, well, I want the R one five zone, full, you know, requirements. And that, but we're just trying to head off right now.
Right. So can we agree that we can rezone the twelve point oh one into the mountain residential? Which is what.
Yeah, this, this board does not have that ability to do this. Um, but again, this is, I, I, I think this is why it's, it's good we're having this conversation because, you know, everything that you're saying goes towards the, the variance granting, at least as far as, uh, you know, the, the issues of is it really a large variance or not? But the, the s- the split lot zoning, um, is something this board has to consider somehow. And if it, if it can't be rectified by way of a, adjusting a lot line, uh, or we can't sit down and come up with some other kind of solution and, and maybe a, a meeting with the applicant and the planner and the, and the engineer and kind of taking a look at this and seeing what we can come up with, um, hearing, you know, the board's concerns. Uh, and again, the fact that we have to go back and notice anyway, uh, I think ultimately could probably go a long way in where the, the hearing, uh, you know, how the hearing goes and, and what the board has to consider.
Is that something Kara that, that, um, that we could put into a deed that all future, um, quote unquote, development on this property would, would then follow whatever we agreed, whether it's mountain residential or R one five? Could that be deeded in there to, to solve that, that issue down the road?
I'd have to look that up. That's a good thought. Um, I'd have to look that up to see if that's precluded by statute in any way, but that's, that's certainly something I'll make a note of. We might be able to go down that road, especially if the applicant agrees. Suppose that as a condition?
Um, all right, let's, let's discuss the easement component so that they have an understanding of it.
Yeah, so as far as the notice goes, and I, and I think with the board's permission, I think this is doable, and I think it would be fair to the applicant. Already published in the newspaper. So we could carry that publication and carry this, this hearing to a next date. We'd have to pick what that is, uh, in order to allow you to notice the property owners, which has to be done for this board to have jurisdiction. So we could carry the publication so you don't have to pay for that again. But when it comes to the notice, you're gonna have to ask for a two hundred foot list. And again, uh, Monica and I can help you out with that around not only lot twelve and lot twelve point oh one, but around lot eleven as well, because you're relocating that easement. And that easement benefits lot eleven. And I know the first thing you're gonna say is you own all the properties, and I know and I understand that. Um, but when it comes to the notification of people within two hundred feet, it changes slightly when you add in lot eleven. So, and just trying to make sure we cover all of our businesses.
Okay, yeah, so you know, the reason there's the request to straighten out the easement at this point in time is to correct the problem caused by the building inspector, whoever they put the driveway in, they said they approved it in, outside the easement. Right, the driveway was built, it was approved, the, so we're trying to fix that. We're just fixing yours, people's error. Well, not these people, but the, you know, when the driveway was put in, it was put in, in an area that was not within the easement, it wasn't caught by anybody. And we're just trying to fix that right now, because there wasn't existing easement up there, it's just the driveway is not.
Must sit in.
Is not in the easement. I never want to put the easement around the driveway.
But then basically how the terrain would more allow it to go in as opposed to where an easement line was drawn on paper.
But again, it took, it took topography. This is a lot of steep slope up there.
Would that be? Not something they add another component, but if they cleared it and it works, you know, about adjusting that easement.
And that's what we're trying to do. We're just trying to adjust the board.
The orders of that system.
So what, what Kara's saying is, because they want to, they want to adjust the easement from where it's currently reported to actually match where the driveway was constructed. They need, that's part of this proposal.
And it would change, we have to notify.
That easement serves lot eleven. Um, lot, lot eleven becomes part of the application because that easement benefits them. Now, for the notice for two hundred feet, from what I can tell, I think that only adds two properties to, to the, to the distribution because you have a lot ten, which is pretty much, uh, you know, on two sides of, of lot eleven, and then there's lot seven point one three, this little triangular sixteen point oh five, that I have no idea.
That the triangle doesn't exist, the triangle is part of lot eleven.
Oh, it is?
Yes.
Oh, okay, because that's not sixteen oh five? Sixteen oh five.
Sixteen oh five.
Said sixteen oh five.
Hey, can I come over? Okay, so.
That's the way I heard.
Oh, no, that's okay. No, this, I'm sorry, this triangle, this triangle, this triangle was another one of the new. With this property, so you understand, is back in the day, these were all woodlots with driftways. And. All of them are landlocked. And I think sixteen oh five, if you find out, is probably an unknown owner, because there was another triangle up there that we ended up doing a quiet title action to get the. Access up to.
Well, you'll you'll get a, there's a tax assessment that that will pull out.
Yes.
And if there's, if there's an address, then send the paperwork out and it's not claimed, you've done your due duty.
So can we answer any questions that the board might have? And then subject to any, maybe handle the hearing at this point in time. And then if anybody shows up. At the next hearing, we can, well, we have other stuff we have to do.
I mean.
We can't start a public hearing tonight, unfortunately. The best we could do is just have this dialogue conceptually with what you're proposing.
So, right, so giving them a list, so you need your two hundred foot. All right, certified letters.
Was that from the tax collector or did you?
Yeah, so tax assessor. Tax assessor, we do that list.
I mean, we certainly would have done it had we known.
Um. All right, and and so the wording. So the wording of that letter, um.
Can we just do the same notice that we did on the, to the newspaper?
You can do the exact same notice. Yeah, that's that's perfectly fine. I would like to take a look at it, though, just to make sure we, you know, if there's any issue.
So Kara will go over for you and then make any any changes for you and then get that back to. Um.
May I have some questions, please?
We're not, we're not taking any public comment on this. This is not a public hearing.
Trying to find out who this person is. Okay, are you representing them?
No, I did the, I'm just, I'm just.
This is, this is strictly for, this is an informational dialogue right now, there's nothing.
And I did the image subdivision, not the try.
I I'm just trying to find out who is the applicant right here, right now. She's in.
Yeah.
Okay, you go to that.
No.
This is true.
So, they have property owners? No, you. Okay, so how are you speaking on that?
Very interesting question, of course.
Because I have a history of these. Okay, well, you seem to be their representative. Yeah.
Okay, um, outside, what else, Kara?
So we need to do the two hundred foot list from all three lots. Um, I would like to take a look at the notice, just to make sure everything is okay. Um, we will carry the publication. Uh we do need to set a date for the next meeting and where this will be heard at, so that can be included in the notice. Um, I would recommend, it's up to the board, um that they give the applicant and the professionals some time to take a look at this and see. What we might be able to resolve. Um, and they are going to need to have enough time to get the two hundred foot list and to notice. Um, I would recommend also that the board get an extension of time from the applicant to render a decision through the end of November. Uh, not that it's going to take that long, uh but it just helps to not have to go back and ask for an additional extension. And. I will look into the issue of placing a deed restriction in a condition in there. That assumes which requirements are going to apply.
And also, if I could just add, I did take, look, you're very close to the border with Union Township. And did check, you're more than two hundred feet away, so you don't get any. Because I've seen that catch applicants before, where you go to the town's assessor, not realizing how close you are.
Yes, some of the backyards on Armor Road are in Union Township.
Um, all right, so our next meeting. Uh, we have.
October twenty third is our next meeting, because.
So we have the holiday.
We have the holiday on the ninth.
October twenty third, gives them plenty of time. Um. Let's go after you get the the cards back and come up with the. The work of the mission, um, the form for the extension, that you can have that sign that. Um. And that would be it. Get, uh, guess copies of, um, Kara actually has a copy of it. But uh she'll she'll go through and make any comments, give it back to Monica, and Monica will get it too.
Anyone, after you're, after you're ready, yeah, okay.
Kara, are there variations in there? We didn't finish, and if so, it's very special with the other papers. They weren't thinking that you needed varies.
Uh, yeah, that's why I want to take a look at the notice. I mean, if I can glean from that, that we can carry that, then that's not a problem. Um, if they need to republish again based on that, I mean, from what I'm hearing, the the variance. It was listed on the plans that I saw, uh it might have been discovered after the notice was. Uh actually forwarded. Again, I didn't see it ahead of time, the notice, so I I'm I'm not really sure exactly what it entails. But it is noted on the plan, uh that there is this pre-existing non-conforming condition. Uh, I'm I'm sure that the applicant probably didn't understand that since they're now going in for a new subdivision. That that kind of opens the door back up to having to address that as a variance. Um, but, uh, you know, we can, we could certainly address that going forward. Uh, again, I'm happy to talk to the applicant, make sure that they're going in the right direction. The application itself does outline the notice requirements, uh but happy to go through it with you and and take a look at it and make sure that everything's in order.
All right, so, uh. What they, we are moving to carry the. Lot thirty six, lot twelve, twelve oh one, application. Uh, the Robinsons to October twenty third. At this point, no further than, um. Notice.
Yeah, except for the notice, the property.
Was the paper? Against. All right, we'll work with that. Your guys. Preordance permit application form.
What do we think? Does that look a little better?
Yes, I have a comment on the examples part. Um, it's still a little bit unclear to me, and I was wondering if we could change it a little bit to, um. And I wrote something up, basically, you know, instead change it to twenty five trees for the first application. This that will show how you will do the graduated um number for trees. So it would be, you know, for twenty five trees, we require the submission of a permit application and payment of a hundred dollars for the removal of trees. Eleven to twenty plus seventy five dollars for trees, twenty one to twenty five, as outlined above, for a total of one seventy five. And then for the part two, with the second app, the second application in the same calendar year for the removal of an additional fifteen trees. Will require the submission of a new permit application and a payment of seventy five dollars for trees, twenty six to thirty. And a payment for two hundred dollars for the removal of trees thirty one to forty, for a total of two hundred and seventy five dollars. It just shows how you're adding these things up, because I I think people get a little bit. Confused. I mean, you've had enough confusion just with us.
Yeah, you're thinking worst case scenario.
Yeah, so trying to figure out to show different ways to look at it, instead of ending on border and in the middle.
Right.
And show how it continues on.
All right, so just so everyone understands what what we're talking about for this. To then they asked, um. When when the, when the, when the tree ordinance was was being laid out and designed. Um, we're, we're not looking to penalize people that are just kind of had a couple trees here, here and there. That's why we had exempted a bunch of trees. Um, dead designs, those are all outside of 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 this, so we're basically looking at your first five trees. There's no permit needed, um. There's a fee. From that point on, tree six to ten, there's a permit, but there is no fee. So the first ten trees don't call residents anything. Um, but the the point of our tree ordinance was to discourage. Um, tree harvesting or 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 vast amounts of trees being removed. So we put the the fees, the more trees you take down within the calendar year. The more that that cost puts up. And so there was um confusion on how that was, that was, um. Being being calculated. So at our last meeting, we decided to come up with a couple of examples. So that people are then able to understand how that calculation is done. So from there, they they can run their own numbers in there. And that's, that's what Jeff is now talking about.
So you just clarify.
We're just clarifying the fee structure of that. We're not adding anything else. This is all done, we're just trying to make it as clear and concise as possible, so anybody can can have an idea if they're gonna cut down fifty trees. Well, how much, what what does that look like? And that's this conversation. All right, Kara?
Yep.
I agree, I mean, uh Jeff's example is clear. Do we, uh, because again, I'd like to get, like to get this stuff moving, so that we have. Fortunately, I don't think I've had any incentive or a resident to come to us um for a permit. I have not heard that. But I don't want it to come to afterward times, looking to cut the trees down. We don't have an application for it.
If there's people with a change that uh was recommended and with everything else in it. I could very easily make that change, um and the board can just vote for me to make that change. And transmit it directly, uh, you know, to Monica for forwarding to the, uh.
Okay, does everyone agree with that?
Yeah.
Sure.
Talkable with it? Okay, so, uh.
You wanna just run through more time? Sure, I propose we make a change, um, to the examples of the calculations. To a first application for the removal of twenty five trees would require the submission of a. Permit application and a payment of a hundred dollars for the removal of trees eleven to twenty. Plus seventy five dollars for trees twenty one to twenty five, as outlined above, for a total of one hundred and seventy five dollars. A second application in the same calendar year for the removal of an additional fifteen trees. Would require the submission of a new permit application and a payment of seventy five dollars for the removal of trees twenty six to thirty. A payment of two hundred dollars for the removal of trees thirty one to forty, for a total of two hundred and seventy five dollars. Yeah, you want to send that to?
Yeah. Kara, would you like him to email that to you? Because he hasn't actually typed out. You got it?
I've already done it. I wrote it. Uh, I can't make that change tomorrow and forward it over to you.
All right, I, I'm the motion to approve the application. Pre-removal, when instead of changes.
I'm making motion to approve the. Pre-removal permit with Jeff's suggested calculation change, here's the energy.
Second, was, uh, any further, sir? Was the paper? Against. Obstacles.
Obstacles.
Okay, uh, so the fencing and wall coordinates, what there's, there's twenty to twenty three. We we imported the tax committee. There's some questions concerned, there was a question changing that we take a look at. And you do the follow-up, you know, closer with what you guys love that.
All right, well, the first, the first one was the, um, the resident who felt that the right of farm. Uh, exclusions were not clear, it could be limited in language. Uh, we thought that it was, you know, we're a rural community and that farm was assumed. But, um, the request, I think the committee was on on board, uh, to put language back in, that that these are, uh, not. Farm, right to farm supersedes these regulations. Yeah, so just to make it clear. And then the second one was the review of deer fencing. I'm gonna add, not just deer fencing, but, uh, well, since deer fencing for animal on both agriculture and domestic. So we're looking at deer fencing, uh, for shrubbery that's within the property lines. This is really geared toward the boundary fencing, so, uh, we're looking for some language. Make it a little more clear about inside fencing, both for shrubbery and, um. Dog runs, which I think are are specified, but chicken poops or any other type of permitted animal, which is pretty much anything at this point. Uh, but there should be some sort of fencing to control and be allowed to do it without a permit.
Any thoughts?
The first one, I think, is easily, you know, the paragraph or.
Right of farm.
Something there?
Wait.
Right farm.
Right of farm.
Yeah, that's easy.
I think it was, I guess, specified that it was in, uh. You know, in a certain section, and then somehow it was revoked. So Kara, I don't know, it's easier to put it back in, or if we just put in a, uh, a blanket, I think probably at this point, she's putting in a blanket. Uh, statement.
It doesn't say in here that. These visitors shall not apply the farm and accept further than permitted fencing in our subjectors. Maybe top of board wire, so it's actually right. The farm is. Maybe top of board wire, so it's actually right. The farm is. Twenty two hundred and thirteen, paragraph egg, that's how it, it forms. Can we make it a separate?
Yeah, I would pull it out.
Make it separate.
I would pull it out.
We can make it, we could, we could sign the statute.
Yeah, it's online.
It's online, maybe even make that.
Why you make that A, yeah.
Yeah, make that A and then everything.
A will be B and B will be C and B will be.
A one. I could change in everything. Add it, we'll just say that, um, no, this.
Get it right, get it right from the get-go.
I think that's the way it was before. I don't know, the original, I guess you can look it up now, but the, the original one does start off specifying. You know, where the farm supersedes and that goes into A. Somehow that got a little bit.
Yeah, I think certainly would regardless. I mean, whether it's in there or not, but let's make it clear so everybody understands.
Kara, I I took that position at the meeting and it was not supported, so the majority of the township committee and the residents would like to see it there.
That's fine, that works for me.
All right, and as far as. I suggest inserting uh some language in section B, because that's where you have the dog run. Uh swimming pool and explorer, so there's some other languages that we can add. Uh another number in there regarding um. You know, landscape protection and or uh animal. Or if you don't, maybe just modify the language of dog, follow me.
Okay, so. I'm gonna crack my brain out, I'm sure, so. The 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 purpose of deer fencing period is for. Landscape preservation. People keeping deer out of their yard or eating their shrubs.
Well, there were. There was some concern at the township committee meeting, um. You know, and could you just throw netting over your shrubs, that considered like offense?
So the way this is legally observed.
And if you move it around, sorry, go ahead.
No, I was just, so so you if you go and put up even uh a deer fence with uh fence stakes. Close to your house, just for like landscaping around your house.
Right.
The way this reads is you need to get a permit to do that. And so is there, is there an exemption, which I think there should be, for people who are in a temporary, but um deer fencing. With temporary stakes.
Prevent like saddles and stuff like that.
And there are seasonal limitations.
I see, okay, so what you're saying is you're 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 planting trees and you want to put fencing around your your trees to keep deer from. And you're concerned that's.
Under the definition of fence, which is what this all applies to, it's pretty. Anything that you guys just described would not be covered in that, because it's a. It's a structure erected in grave for the purpose of defining boundaries of property. Separating open space, restricting uh ingress to or egress from. Property, providing security or protection to property, or acting as a visual or acoustic screen, so. You know, nothing that would be temporary would be covered into this, that would be less applied to the fence. And nothing like, you know, throwing a net or something over. Over shrubbery would qualify, because it's not a a structure.
And if there's uh stakes put in the ground, you know, temporarily.
I don't think that that. Because it wouldn't be defining boundaries or separating open space or.
We 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 could add, put in. I think to. Uh there's a concern, I guess, that that's someone who's rapping a tree or something is gonna run foul, so. We can, we can say that again, again, the problem, I think we run with saying temporary, is now we have to put a time limit in. As as some type of, you know, temporary, that'd be five years. So. Again, as trying not to make.
You know, because it's overly.
I mean, most fences have footing.
You can still, yeah, but the way this is like, like Jose points out, the definition number two, essentially, it's a perimeter fence. So is there some language you can use to exempt uh fences that are not perimeter fences? Is it, is it really your landscape? And you could end up with your landscape, you're rapping one tree, or you're rapping landscaping around in front of your house.
I I don't think that that would be covered. Under this, because again, it's not a structure.
I think your question is just for clarification, just before I understand that.
I mean. The the problem is that you start getting into every single little iteration, this can end up being, you know, a book. You know, I mean, I think that by saying what this include. And saying that that stuff, and that obviously doesn't fall into what it included in this. It was the example.
I I am I am fine if this board sends a message back to the township committee saying that you build the definition of offenses. Uh, precludes. Any of those, any of those other restrictions, and that there should be no language added.
I I just, I I hate to keep on adding, because it's getting down, and definitely, you know, we're building more and more. You know. Of a complex. Situation, and you know, try and keep it.
Yeah, I'm fine with that, I just, I just, there's two, I know there's two committee members, uh one who may not be an attorney. And we interpret this from a legal standpoint as not fully does, and then another, it's not comparable to that, so I think the thought is too. We're here, and we're very familiar with land board members. And so if you're the average resident, like if like if I, I've never came to a land board meeting and I read, I I don't know the difference between. You know, the landscape fence that I'm gonna come and protect my shrubs from my house versus. Uh, a structure erected in grave for the purpose of defining boundaries. Like, what does that mean to me as a resident, so like, that's why I think the, you know, the confusion, I don't want to add to it.
Oh, yeah, and and those questions arise, that's why we have a zoning officer, and and anyone has a question, especially if they're trying to follow the rules. They're gonna go see our zoning officer and.
They're gonna try to get a permit theoretically, and he can say, you don't need a permit because it's X minus. I'm just sharing a couple of them, maybe somebody just.
And then word, Kara. I mean, Kara, do you hear what? What the explanation is, is there a avenue to? To help out the young of these. May people, the understanding of it to.
I mean, I could, I could definitely. Expand upon that definition, which is essentially what we're talking about here, and by doing that, indicate that. Uh items such as. You know, raptor landscaping or trees or something like that shall not be included in the definition of, but. You know, or something along those lines, but but I think you're right too, that then. You know, I'd have to put in there, including but not limited to, you know, so I it it definitely gets to be more. Um cumbersome at that point, but I understand, I I I see the need for it and I understand the concerns about it. So maybe I can come up with some. Language that might be helpful, and if anybody on, you know, the committee has has suggestions. Uh, you know, happy to to listen to that as well, but you know, that's the problem you get into, I mean, our ordinance most likely says, like most others. Anything that's not specifically permitted herein is hereby prohibited. Um, so that's always helpful. Um, but let me, let me take a look, maybe I can, may maybe the way that. To to address it is not to focus on as much as describing what it is. But maybe to focus on the intention. Because if the intention. You know, is is to be able to protect landscaping. You know, as opposed to creating a boundary, I mean, I I understood with that boundary.
Well, that and the containment of any animals, so chickens, roosters, goats uh within, they may not be farmland assessed, so they so they are subject to the permit. I mean, right now, you can have chickens and goats on an acre lot, unfortunately, at that time. And uh and so it's containment, and I hate to modify this ordinance based on that, because hoping that we do readdress that ordinance as well. But uh I do work on what we have, it's working on this now, so if there's some way to specify. Uh, the intent is to to protect the landscaping. Uh, you know, early tree plantings, containment of. You know, animals uh that are not perimeter fences, so so now we find.
Yeah, because I think from a deer perspective. So uh section B seven describes deer fencing. As to what it can or can't be. But under the definition in section F, it's specific that deer fencing is. To basically restrict travel of the year, not to protect protect shrubbery. So I think if we change the definition of a deer fence to include the protection of shrubbery or plants or whatever. Then B seven. Right, can say as is and prioritize material that can be deer netting and it's anchored to the ground. But then we. No, we were talking about the definition of the fence, I'm talking about, but deer fence.
Well, in the in the definitions, I think, just to have.
In definition one, just put, you know, add any word in for protection of.
But if you're gonna, you're gonna call all landscape protection deer fence can fall under that same category according to. Section eight that requires issuing some zoning equipment approval. We're back to like, it must be rapid screen.
E E also kind of covers what this covers, and it does. You know, it says, any new deer fence, driveway fence or gate shall be required to comply with the provisions of this ordinance. That, so it's really, it's not addressing anything that's inside. Of that perimeter fence. The only thing that.
I I agree, but I think maybe you have to feel that the average resident doesn't understand that. Yeah, I I tried to share how I can seem to like, uh, like the farm not say it again, because it's. And and defining all these is perimeter fence, not a form of. I, you know, you know, with that property of not defining what goes inside of a perimeter fence.
Well, what's the purpose of deer fencing? It's to keep the deer out, because why, on the same rule, that they're, so they don't eat, they don't travel, they don't put the bar.
But I think the question is, if you put a deer fence on the perimeter of your property. You need a permit, if you put deer fence up against landscaping inside your property line, you shouldn't need a permit.
Okay, if under definition. If under definition. We put. The what's there. And say that fences shall not um include any. Any protections around shrubbery. Um, within the property. Or uh pens or the only, the only problem with that is that we have the dog run.
Well, a couple of meetings ago, I had said even a few people agreed to. That I find it very hard to believe that a person would, unless you have a farm that has free farm and that. Someone's gonna put all around their whole property, like to stop the deer. If we're talking about the residential people, folks, most times, and I'd bet money on it, and I'm not betting person. If we're talking about trees, we're talking about the land, uh the bushes in front of our house. You know, planting new little saplings and things like that. Why don't we just remove deer fencing? Just remove it right out.
And just allow it everywhere.
And the concept, because do you really think in our town and people with all our properties and our, you know, even the farmhouse, you know, but. Is part of, you think people are gonna put all, really, around, you know. But you 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 do it, you know what I'm saying, but even with. Even with, then nobody's done that even now without this.
But but the question is, does that address the concerns that they brought?
I I don't think there's, you're still, like, it doesn't, they never specify that it's allowed, I mean, you just change it, but it's not specified that it's allowed, and then bring it to secondary, it's. Yeah, I don't contain it.
So how do you put a specific size on it, for example, so if it is. Go run, um if it is something like that, where you can say it's using all thighs, it's not included. Um, and also for the size of your shrubbery around your house, um, you know, the thing I keep thinking about. Okay, I'm gonna put shrubbery around all four corners of my house, and now I'm gonna put a big fence around the whole property. Now, you're gonna hit anything, right?
Now you're willing up there.
Yeah, I I I mean, there's so many different ways this can go, this is this is very complicated.
Great, you're saying?
That even with the dog run, we'll have to look at that other, I I don't. We had an issue several years ago about um a dog run, whether it was a kennel, a dog run, and this or that. So something, one of the ordinances. In another ordinance as about a dog run.
Yeah, that's under kennels, though. There is a kennel ordinance, yeah.
And that should reflect something, you know, if we're talking about a run with a kennel, even if it's your private kennel, it's.
I mean, what if what if we, what if we were to say that a dog run slash uh animal then?
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Um, may have fencing a maximum of eight feet.
There you go.
Yeah.
And just leave it at that. And then that covers many.
That covers.
Only.
Dog run. Animal containment, dog and animal.
Yeah, dog runs.
Kara, you got that?
Dog run fencing and animal containment, I don't know if we want to say maintenance or something, maintaining, something along those lines. Um, shall, give me the end of that.
Hmm, it's, so it's 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 one oh two nineteen. Um, B one, one. But it says a dog run may have fencing a maximum of eight feet in height. A dog run slash animal containment. They have fencing to a maximum of eight, of eight feet in height. So located in your yard.
Um, yeah, because I think that that actually, if you read the whole thing, it deals with it pretty well, that it keeps it in the backyard, it keeps it, you know. Separated from property lines, you know, that that would actually help a lot, I think, with uh.
All right, so that's that's that concern, but then still the other concern as far as. Uh, netting, netting versus. Fencing around ornamental, and maybe that's more of a term.
Some people do use, um, I've seen people use the netting.
Like seven A. They add something under seven that says, um, you know, netting. Netting for shrubbery and protecting saddles is not subject to this ordinance, or something like that. You know, for the for the for the purpose of protecting.
Yeah, trees and shrubbery, I mean.
We can, we add, it must be a good uh building, well, building, uh, building, there, you can't. Plant trees in the corner of your yard, fences around, leave the building envelope, keep it.
Okay.
Because we can't specify twenty five feet in the front of your house, building envelope, I think a reasonable enclosure. Or landscape protection.
Something like ornamental shrub protection or ornamental shrub and tree protection, within within the building envelope.
People don't spend a ton of money on stuff that is out in the wood, I mean, you you do it. It's usually for aesthetic purposes, right, so you're not painting that, you know, stuff, you know, back of the woods, there'll be seeds. I think some people might have it up front, foot of their driveway, though.
I hear we want to do away with allowing shrubbery or trees or anything outside the building envelope?
No, 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 we want to allow the protective fencing. Uh, for landscaping within the building envelope.
I think I think that the best bet is to just say the fencing does not cover. Anything that would be used to protect shrubs or trees from um.
Wash destruction.
From from wildlife, yeah. So that that way, you know, because Jeff is right, I mean, if you have, you know, you can have a big collection of rhododendron at the end of your driveway. And that every winter time you wrap it with burlap to make sure it doesn't get burned. Then is that allowed anymore, you know, it's, you know, I would say if you just leave that stuff, you exclude it. Right, and that way.
That's probably the easiest way to do it.
So under definition, we'll just exclude that stuff?
Or it'd be under ten, we do one oh two nineteen, ten. The farm of farm exclusion is uh on the first one.
Put the exclusions up there, farms, you know, forest duty farm has all its, sort of shrubbery.
That's a good point, I mean, we we can, we we can just add exclusion line. Excluding farm.
Letting these exclusions right off the bat.
The theory after the built perimeter fence and said, definitely. Right.
Would you?
I wouldn't. Well, what I'm saying is, if you expect, the only exclusion is. Something to protect shrubbery. Well, why can't I build. A fence around my entire property and say it's protecting my shrubbery?
You can.
No, I, no, I'll wait my exception, and I don't. No, this is, also saying, and doesn't meet the definition of.
Exactly, exactly. Put them together, because to Jose's point, if you don't meet the definition, then you're excluded. To make it clear that wrapping, that landscaping is excluded, but again, provided that. It doesn't meet the definition, strict definition of fence, so you can't put a fence around landscaping protected.
That's okay.
Alright, so there'll be a definition of landscaping?
Is it?
No, we're gonna add another definition.
Mostly the the.
Definition of land, because again, I'm right back to that, that if someone says they're gonna, they're gonna circle their whole property because they plan things. They have, they have one, one shrub on one corner and one shrub on another corner. And now we're we're gonna exempt all fencing around ornamentals. Somebody can say, I'm I'm just doing the whole.
But I thought that we just said that we were gonna say we're exempting around ornamentals. Um as long as it doesn't fall under the the other definition of.
What are your footage around, so they can't do the entire yard?
I don't think that we said that we can't, because you can't fence in your entire yard. I think that we allow that.
Well, you can, based on going for permit.
Right.
Uh I'm saying we need a definition of ornamental or landscaping, because without it. People can say their grass could be landscaped.
Shouldn't we just, don't we do that in the tree ordinance? Can't you just say we're heard enough? Tree ordinance, will we just, will we describe that in that stuff?
Well, no, I mean, this side of the thing.
Like, didn't we go through this?
Part of our ordinance is, there is a definition already in there that says landscaping, the shrub, and system, trees, shrubs, ground cover, cranes, annuals, blah blah.
So ground gum, so if we saw these, it could grow really nice grass. And now they put a fence around their whole yard.
Okay, but again, that that.
That's that's the problem, I mean.
But that fence would meet the definition of, is that deer fencing, that'd be a permit? And that would, and that would need a permit.
Why don't we not call it landscaping? Because if landscaping includes ground cover, obviously, we don't want, I don't think anyone's gonna wrap their lawn, but. You know, it it it's, sorry. Maybe we say trees, bushes, shrubs. Um that's really what we're talking about here.
And right, flowers.
Like, I mean, people don't like that perennial.
So perennial is whatever you want to call it.
Yeah, but I mean, flowers.
All right, Tom, Tom had to put a maximum distance from a landscaper?
So in other words, that way you're not worried about encompassing a larger area than the landscaping you're actually trying to protect. So you put in, you know, fencing no more than ten feet or whatever the number is away from the landscaping. And then to catch the point about, you know, you know, landscaping on opposite corners, and you can't fence in everything in between.
Do that for like the HVAC fences, didn't we have to not exceed X distance? Take take a look at that and kind of mirror it here. Not the same distance maybe, but just the same type of concept that Tom's referring to.
The zoom killed you.
That was horrible.
Got every other word.
Try try one more time.
Yeah.
Sorry, sorry. Didn't we put a distance around fencing for things like HVAC? So if we were like, you couldn't exceed a certain, you know. Square footage or or distant linear feet from, I mean, I could kind of mirror that, maybe not the same distance. But that type of concept around the landscape, around the shrubs, bushes, trees, whatever, to talk to.
Two linear feet, linear utility. So we can keep it at.
Well, that, I think the two linear was to allow, still allow access, in this case, you don't really need the access, probably. Oh, but.
I mean, if you plant a tree and accept a new tree, two feet around is gonna allow.
Right, it shouldn't be more than.
A lot of people have a lot of problems to take two feet.
That way you can sit there and wrap individual trees.
So that's typically what you do anyway. If you want to protect your trees from deer.
Yeah.
So do we just keep it consistent at at two feet around? Maximum two feet around.
Yeah. So where is that gonna be then?
In this exclusion.
All right, so.
A bracketed landscape fence not to achieve linear feet. Around one side of the landscape.
Okay, around shrubbery.
Shrubbery trees. Are those, those, those two changes, did that work?
I think that it was.
Yeah.
We'll do our best, we can sell.
I thought he was in favor.
But he wants to protect his landscape. It's open to the public, any public comment connect?
There's a coordinate Charleston Road, I hear you all chuckling. And um. I'm sorry, and who are you?
The attorney.
Okay, what's your name, Kara?
Yes, my name is Kara Kuzinski. Can I just have your name and address again, please?
Kirsten Ennis. Uh how do you spell your last name, Kara?
K A E Z Y N S K I.
And your firm is?
McNally Yaros Kuzinski and Line.
McNally Yaros?
Yaros, Y A R O.
Oh, okay, you're in, you're in Quentin. Kuzinski? Okay, so I hear all you chuckling.
And and I'm sorry, can I get your address, please, Kirsten?
Four four nine one Charleston Road and it's Kirsten Ennis.
You spelled out your last name for me?
Tennis without the T. Um, I'm number one, wanna know why we even have this fencing ordinance? I hear you all chuckling about, oh, we shouldn't have this, we shouldn't have that. And I'm just curious, who promulgated having a a fencing ordinance?
We've had a fencing ordinance for years.
Okay, what who who had to implement an upgrade to that? Nobody's complaining. Who's gonna enforce this? Why are we having this hippie about the joke, uh it's it's a joke for you. You're all joking, you're all laughing. And you're, it's a, you know, I can't put a thing around my shrub to keep the deer out. I can't. Be have a fence to keep my chickens in, I can't have a fence to keep my goats in. Whose business is it?
That's, did you miss the whole conversation tonight?
No, I listened.
Complete opposition, complete misunderstanding of what we discussed, so.
Okay. Why don't you clarify?
So, oh, I don't have to, it's in the record.
Okay, if you could put that on the record, which it's never put on.
So we had a very, very um strict. When it came to no fencing allowed, and so over the years, we've had people that have had planted and spent a lot of money on landscaping. We had an ordinance that didn't allow any sort of deer fencing or anything else. So we decided to look into it to now allow deer fencing literally encompassing a property. So that people that choose to 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 put, to spend money, and it's now protected. So this this was discussed over the last four months, five months. Changed and done, and it's, it was voted on and passed up to the council committee. So what was done tonight was there was a couple inserted by other residents about specificities. Now, and as we had gone through tonight, I think all of those were clarified in in this. All right, in in the original context of what we sent out, but we're trying to make it easier now, and that's what we've done tonight. Making it even easier to understand. We're not looking at 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 making things harder, we're actually trying to make things easier. And, you know, we we have the ordinances in place, because there are always people out there that are gonna do whatever they want. So again, what we're trying to do. Who is in the course? We have a zoning officer.
And he's gonna drive around and say your fences.
No, as as everything in this town, we we don't have a police state zoning officer. So it takes, it takes individuals to have a complaint. And that complaint goes to our zoning officer and the zoning officer to investigate that. All right, he doesn't come to this board, he goes to the council committee. And give a report to the to the council committee on on any of those findings, and I believe he can issue some of this. We're gonna have to try to resolve it, the resident before he issues a settlement.
So neighbor versus neighbor?
Well, we're not looking, again, hopefully, a a a good policy is to be friendly with your neighbor, but. There is, there is, there is a line in the sand, there's a property line. And there are people out there that 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 don't choose to like your neighbor or or want to support what what that neighbor's doing. So everyone has a right to live on their property, where they kind of wanna live within reason. And that's where, so I mean, the fence ordinance, it it's. It it pretty much makes it so that, I mean, we, you can't wall yourself off. We don't want that. It's this, this board has made it pretty clear, we're not looking at 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 having um. Eight-foot fences, stockade fences around every house, but then it's a, it's a prison, that's not what we're looking at, you know.
Is there a setback back from where?
From any of the roads. There's a setback from from the roads and property.
You wanna put uh a netting across your uh what you call uh.
The shrubs?
The shrubs.
Oh, again, netting, netting was something that was not put in.
I'm just saying, if the neighbor wants to complain about that, is there a limit from the distance from the road?
No, so netting, and that's what was discussed, and netting is not included in that. And it's that's on.
That was a change that I thought that was gonna happen.
Yeah.
We excluded it.
That's excluded. So globally, I've said this before, I have a large property rights advocate, so globally. This ordinance makes it easier for residents to install fencing gates and whatever they need to. Now, that's from a council committee, and we're we're elected, that's from an executive level standpoint and view. This is a quasi judicial body, so they have, that's why they engineers here, the engineers here, there are site setbacks and things that they need to worry about. You know, when we, like, if we're coming from an executive standpoint, I want people to be able to do it as much as they legally can on their own properties. I mean, they should have a property rights person. But there are things that have limitations, that's what this board does, and they're bound by that. They're not allowed to make decisions. Um on an executive level and and have the the concepts of what that is. They're bound by certain guidelines, the state outlines and statues, and like I said, the sidelines that are D O D approved, even though they're back on township roads. You know, your exit from your driveway is still subject to sidelines as specified by the D O D engineer.
So when you say limitations, can you define those? Is that in the ordinance?
The limitations to where that fencing can go, side yards, rear yards, front yards. Gates, gates coming off the road, you know, again, if you put a fence.
I'm not talking about gates, I'm talking about fencing to keep farming deer out. And away from your house.
So again, that's all, that's all, it's actually easier to do that.
And there's footage defined in those.
Setback to me?
Yes.
Yeah, it's all in here.
Okay, so if I'm three hundred feet off the road, is that gonna have a an an application or the. Something against my property? What's the setback?
You're a farmer, aren't you?
Uh I'm not, I'm talking about the regular people.
Depending on what's on there. And if they're farming or not, it's all specified in here.
I'm just talking about if I'm driving down mine road and there's a house. A hundred yards from the property, the the road, what's gonna happen? They can't put a fence up?
Yeah, they put a fence up.
And that's gonna be defined in the ordinance. All right, thank you, Kara.
You're welcome.
To do more for Charleston, first of all, I didn't understand.
Kara, Suzanne.
Suzanne Wilder, four twenty-four Charleston Road.
Hi Suzanne.
Hi Kara. So I didn't understand two things. You said that the existing ordinance did not exempt deer fencing? That's not true, it's right here. I don't know if I agree with everything that it said you had to do for deer fencing, but it totally exempted deer fencing.
We modified it, we modified it for front yards.
So it did exempt it before, totally. And then what I don't understand is, so if I'm a. If I own a property and I wanna put deer fencing around, you know, the mesh, not, you know, the. Chain link fence kind of thing, why can't I? Why would you, why would you exclude, and you you're saying that you're, you wanna make your ordinance less restrictive, but to me. Especially for the deer fencing part of it, it's less restrictive from that point of view, the way it's currently stated.
Because the deer fencing is, it's much there, you can see through with my feature. All right, as soon as you start calling it the stockade fences?
Oh, no, 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 that's not, no, what I'm trying to understand is, I, maybe I misunderstood, but there was, what Jeff was saying that. That's hi- his example of, let's say I put a, you know, a shrub, a rhododendron on one corner and a rhododendron on. This side of my grass and then I wanna deer fence that whole thing in, it sounded like that's not gonna be allowed.
No, that's, we just said that would be allowed.
So it, so I could fence in my whole yard with deer fencing if I wanted to.
Yeah.
No, no.
You could fence in the individual shrubs, so it'll be better.
That's what I'm talking about.
I just, can I just clarify for you Suzanne, because I think this might help. I think where we landed, and and let's just remember, this is not adopted yet, we're still going through. Changes back and forth from the committee to the planning board, so there's still opportunities, make changes for everybody to make comments, et cetera. I think what we were talking about was a wrapping of shrubs, trees. And as long as the wrapping did not constitute a fence as defined by the ordinance. Then it would be exempt and allowed. I think that's where we landed.
Right, so currently the ordinance says deer fencing with a finished installation by not to exceed eleven feet shall be exempt. Regardless of how much of your property it takes in.
What's the date of that?
Two thousand seventeen.
Right, so two thousand seventeen was the first bite that we took of this. So before that, deer fences were not allowed.
Okay.
Okay, then two thousand seventeen, we amended that and we allowed uh deer fencing.
Okay.
And now this turnaround, we went, we modified it again to encompass other issues that had come in specifically gates. Which had come to the to before this board for a variance. And we looked at that and we decided that, you know, gates should not be excluded from from this. And so we decided to take another look at the fencing ordinance and came up with this.
But the whole premise is that the ordinance that you're working on now is less restrictive. And I'm saying right here from two thousand seventeen, I could deer fence my entire yarding.
Right.
And it would be allowed without having to a permit, so I think I should, after you're done with this. Be allowed to do that still. And the the wrapping of shrubs. Is not just one example. For instance, let's say I have some woods in the back. And I wanna protect it so I can, you know, the native plants that will come up on its own will come up if the deer aren't there. That's another example, so I go and put that plastic deer meshing thing, you know, around some of the trees, some of the woods in the woods. It's not landscaping per se. I think I should be able to allow, I.
That would be allowed.
Well, I understand that, but I'm saying, I don't, I don't think you should put any, I think the wording of. Which I think Bob Kenny was trying to get at was, you you exempt. Deer exclusion fencing and don't put a restriction on how much of your property you're allowed to put that on. That's my personal feeling.
Do we definitely exclude for deer fencing? I felt that we were, we were allowed on that anywhere.
Well, I think it wasn't clear and I, and I understand you guys have been working on this for a long time and you guys might know it totally. But I tell you, I I mean, I have to admit, I wasn't reading it, but when the property owner came up and he had his. Chicken run that moves all over the place, whether he's ready to form or not, let's pretend he's not, you know, on a farm. And he wants to move his chicken tractor from different locations, he felt it wasn't clear.
One one oh two nineteen eight, any deer fence, fence or gate? One, one oh two nineteen eight, any deer fence, fence or gate that are positive division shall require the issue of a zoning claim approval only. And not require, not require.
I don't, I, my personal feeling is, I don't think, as you stated, it should be any more restrictive than it was written in two thousand seventeen, which is what you guys have said.
And I don't think it is.
It might not be, but if it's not clear to even your township committee member who is an attorney. And another resident, then something, and and I understand you guys say, think it's very clear, because you guys know it all, but. People don't want to have to be in question, are they needing a permit, are they needing approval, et cetera, et cetera. So I do think clarifying it as best as possible with least amount of words.
We try to play quiet, then then by not having any rules.
I didn't say no rules, I didn't.
It gets me, so you start to walk a line, we're trying to to incorporate everybody.
So the only, the only restriction in this ordinance. As far as deer fences. Are that they shall not, they shall be located outside of any required site triangle. That's it. So everything else, you can put it completely around your property as long as it's setback from the site.
Okay, well, then I didn't, then I misunderstood what Jeff was letting.
All we are going, yeah, because I was kind of saying what you wanted, I mean, I, not that, but you could have. Ornamental here, ornamental there that you want to protect.
Well, I.
You want a spot.
I didn't want the discussion of wrapping a particular shrub, I think that's.
I misunderstood what you were asking. The, the, as this ordinance applies to deer fencing, there is no restriction except that it shall not be in in a site triangle, which is. Something that is, by law, we have to, we have to preserve the site.
All I'm saying is, your township committee member who's an attorney has a question about it, so obviously, something needed.
That's what we're, that's what we're firing on tonight, you think we're firing on is to. Read his understanding.
Clarify it without making it restrictive, I think that's the, I part about what a side triangle is, please.
The side triangle is, is the, is the triangle that is created, and it's in our ordinance, it's in our code.
You can read it on one or two. I'm just reading here, see, the side triangle even should be required to protect in. In addition to the side by right of way width, at which no grading, man, hands or structure. No planting or structure shall be erected or maintained more than thirty inches above the street center line. Except for utility full streets, sign, car, items, and light standards. The side triangle is defined as that area outside of the street right of way, which is bounded by the intersecting street line and the straight line connecting site points.
It's defined in one oh two dash thirty. That's by.
And where is that from?
One oh two dash thirty.
In what?
Online, if you go to our code book, code three sixty online, yeah, you can, on the website.
And it's, it's, it's speeds, uh, it's speed specific to the speed limit of the road. So the higher the speed limit on the road, the larger your play, the intensity of drivers, right?
Good evening, Barbara Cogburn, five oh seven, Charleston, Ohio. So Mr. Reyes, at the last meeting, I thought he asked about having a copy of the master plan on the website. What I found is only a revision from two thousand and twelve. Which is the same time that our township was confirmed to the Highlands, so there was only six pages of map. So I would suggest, at least if you, uh. If you want people to understand a little bit better about the master plan, and if you don't have a copy, eh, if you're willing. To post a petition and recommendation report from the Highlands when we confirmed, and.
We're.
And and and, you know, there is, and it would be awesome.
Two thousand fourteen.
Two thousand and ten.
No, two thousand fourteen is when we finally got our approval from.
Twenty twelve.
No, fourteen, twenty twelve, we applied. Fourteen, the Highlands finally reviewed our application and everything, and it was, I believe it was October tenth, two thousand fourteen.
Because I have all these pages, and it's only from the open space and the recreation plan elements, so that was really the six pages. On the web is not sufficient. I also urge the board to. Post a draft if they want, if you want more, um. More public comments input and comparisons, so we can compare, eh, compare. And also the process is a little bit different of what we said before. Because it says on on this petition, it said the process for ordinances, changes in ordinance, and then use changes. Alors, could this process lead to proposed modification to any portion of the ordinance? The proposed changes shall be submitted for review by the Highlands Council prior to adoption by the governor body. So they're going to review if there is any meaningful change to the regional master plan, this is what I understand. And so it goes first to review to the board, to the council, and then it comes here. In that case, the public has fourteen days of public comment with the council. So, uh. So I think it would be interesting to have public input on the draft. Thank you very much.
And now there's gonna be some time or or planning issues in having, um, or some public, public. Having a part.
So we need to. We need to read it.
I thought that we agreed that we would. Um, we would put, that that Lou was gonna put up the current. And then. Um. And then once, yeah, I mean, the the.
I do, I haven't, I'll be honest, I've not checked our website, I do resonate that they did find the current master plan on the website.
Yeah, so that's what I thought that.
We, what we have, what we have is the two thousand twelve periodic reexamination, the twenty twenty housing elements plan and the current zoning map.
Yeah.
So you don't have the Highlands element?
Not right now, but I'd be happy to put it up.
Yeah, I mean, that that's, that's the driving, um, that's what control are are zoning anymore anyway. Is the Highlands element of the master plan. So that should be up there for sure.
I'll, I'll look for it, he's, he put up what I sent him.
Yeah.
Um, I didn't know about.
Yeah, so the master plan consists of a bunch of different elements.
Yeah.
So the the how, the, there's a housing element, there's a, um, stormwater management element, there's a, a. Uh, wastewater management element, and there is a, there's a recreation element, there's an environmental element.
It's usually like a checklist box, it's a large, it's all spreadsheet, large square boxes. And it's got all the elements on there.
Yeah.
It should be, it's like a cover sheet, uh, somewhere.
Yeah, so so, yeah, if you could give that to Lou, then he could put the whole thing online, so that that's, that was just misunderstanding that, that we didn't know. We did, we did think that we were putting the whole.
Yeah, so it was on there, and when the draft is available, public comment will be up there.
But the draft, we can all browse through the draft in the Highlands Council, and then we know if it's necessary. On further revisions from the house. Before coming back for a public call, a public here and here, it's an inverse process. As far as I understand.
Any other public comments? Question or close?
Question or close?
Second? Was it better?
I, yeah.
All right, we've got, and. We do manage some kind of levels.
There is a, there is a change that I noticed, um, meeting, I think it said that. Steve was in attendance, you know, at the last meeting. And was.
Definitely is not.
Looks like changes in the last time you were in.
Yeah, I know, I know.
Yeah, I saw, I saw it online.
Yeah, I can get a copy. Good, we just stay a little bit, yeah.
Karen. Uh, nothing, just related, just a general note, uh, this Saturday is community day, since I apologize, I've just given some slight notes. Just killing some last minute phone calls, but, uh. It's one day, we have a movie planned, of course, the fireworks, and Heather and Heather alone. I think it was a boot truck as well, music, uh, so it'll be fun day to get out there, starting at four in Harrow Park. And finishing up about ten o'clock on the fireworks head, so forward to seeing many of you out there, and enjoying Harrow's water. Really. I told, nothing, other, nothing else, plan used earlier.
Okay.
Again, nothing, well, then, just related, this Wednesday is the last Wednesday for market. It was a very, very good season, we learned a lot too, so there'll be some changes next year for the, um. I won't say we're hoping, because that committee would have to vote on it, but. Um, so yes, a very, very good inaugural season, a lot of press. Congratulations to the residents who put it together. Did you picture open, the nature was there, you never did post my picture. I forgot.
She's a former, uh, teacher, she's good.
Really?
She's still there, I don't know if she's still there. She's a teacher.
She's cute.
Yeah. Very good.
And, uh. Some committees, nobody got together, yeah, we did.
You did, yes. Yeah, once again, Dave.
And, yeah, we we went over, um. The, um. There, there was actually two reviews that were done in two thousand twelve. Uh, one in July and one in. Uh, I think it was October, and, uh.
This is for master plan?
This was.
The master plan stuck to any meeting when the planner just started writing us. The planner wasn't in attendance.
The planner was in attendance, yeah, it was a Zoom meeting, uh, unfortunately, my Zoom was not up to date, so I had to do it by phone. But the, uh, uh. The, I mean, you know, we we went over the the, um. The recommendations and things from from the last, uh, from from the two thousand twelve reviews. And, uh, and we've read through all that, uh, we've looked at some of the demographic changes and things like that. That, uh, that were there and different, um, things that the Highlands has basically used to back up the regional master plan. Uh, so we we got to understanding all that stuff. Uh, one thing that came up that is, I think, very important. Uh, is that, uh, we asked with Zereus about the, um. The Environmental Commission supplying us with the, um. The latest inventory. Uh, environmental resource inventory. And he says that the Environmental Commission is no longer meeting. Um, so that is something that is a serious issue. Because we are required to have an environmental commission. And the Environmental Commission is the custodian of the environmental resources inventory. Uh, so without that inventory. We really can't update the master plan. And that's, and that's a key part of this, because that's. Showing all of the properties that we've acquired in the last, you know, since the last, um. Review, and we purchased quite a few properties, you know, barland reservations, any. Any properties that that have been donated to the town or anything like that, so. Um, and any, you know, any new waterways or anything that have been identified. Uh, you know, all that is very important that it be in that P R I. And, uh, with non-functional commission, um, you know.
Can I clarify that, please?
Yeah, Jose, go ahead.
Yeah, I wasn't, I didn't say it didn't exist, I said, we have, uh. Less members and that. We normally had five members, we're down to four official members. And we're in the middle of transition. Uh, some of the members are brand new. Uh. So that. We need to get up to speed, we need to have a chair. To help lead the, uh, Environmental Commission. And that's where I left it, I didn't say it didn't exist. We are.
Where, where is that, look, what, what is it, because you've, you've been a member of it for a long time. What is it, what, what, what help do you need? Do you need it from the mayor? Do you need it?
Well, the mayor has been extremely helpful. Uh. We're trying to find a chair. Uh, that is the main focus, because, uh, the way the. Commission works, each. Like anything else, uh. Nope, because there is no leadership, people don't want to move. One direction or the other. Uh, and at this point, we just. We meet, however, uh. Things like reviewing the master plan is gonna be difficult. And we do need a chairperson, and the mayor has been trying, and he's been very supportive of us, so. You know, we've had a, a few people resign, et cetera.
Yeah, actually, Mr. Reyes has been, uh, I would say, a leader of the Environmental Commission, and in lack of a chair, we've been working to find a chair, we're looking to find some members as well. Uh, but, uh, Mr. Reyes said the menu for the work you've done is is in that leadership role without the official title. And I do believe that we have our open space inventory, uh. Mostly complete, uh, our county administrator has been working on that. And I haven't seen the completed report, but I don't think there's much to do to complete it, that would go to the Environmental Commission. Uh, for their final review and approval, but I think we've done most of the work for them at this point.
Yeah, but it does have to go to the, to the Environmental Commission for the.
And I think we could do that, Jose, I think there's enough expertise that we could do that.
I I must, I may, may have misunderstood you, Jose, but, uh, at at the meeting, at the subcommittee meeting, uh, you indicated. That this was not something that you could provide, and it's something that is really important for for this review. So.
I totally agree.
Sorry if I misunderstood you, but, um, yeah, that's why I wanted to bring that up before the entire board, to make sure. That this was something that that the Environmental Commission could, uh, could ultimately provide.
I I will connect with county administrator with you, Mr. Reyes, and I believe once this is completed, that we can submit for the Environmental Commission review.
Well, is it something pertaining to this?
Yes, I've emailed the Environmental Commission, uh, I've gone to Don here as a committee. Person, I've spoken to or emailed, uh, the leader. I think he indicated I had to file a resume, um, I'm not really sure what that resume would entail. I've been a lifelong. Uh. Member of this community for sixty years, I was born here, I don't know what.
Hey, that's great, yeah. If you, if you submit a letter like that, and the resume, and I would give you a simple thought, I would like to be in my environmental commission, because, that's what I say, here's my resume.
And I'm happy to step up, I've gone to a couple meetings, um.
Yes, you have, thank you.
And, um, I have. I've lived here my whole entire life, and I really want to keep this a rural community, and that's why I'm here at this planning board meeting. With less regulations and less improvement, and, um. That's.
Well, unfortunately, I do need to pay for it, just because of the process that I follow, it is. I've only served on the planning board review two thousand and four earlier, uh, but it's, it is an appointment, just doing my due diligence, documenting, I do need at least a letter.
I will have a letter to come up.
Does the, um, mayor appoint the chair?
The, the, the chair, the chair, well, chair isn't under the three organization meeting, uh, but I I ask that the Environmental Commission select that person, so I don't. I can, but I don't see the point in doing that to them.
Right.
Rather have them represent, you know.
Yeah, so they, they should select their own chairman and ask you to appoint them.
I've worked with them, the other members I've spoken to, the previous members I've spoken to. Uh, we've spent some time on this, uh, you know, Mr. Reyes and I have worked well together, uh. Not while I'm not gonna get in the chair, but we've spoken to both previous and existing members about that role, and I've not been able to build with somebody willing to take that role.
Okay. So, um. I believe that we, we are gonna have another meeting, I don't know if we scheduled it, um, to move on to the, uh. Open floor with the, with the review.
I just, I have a question. I'm sorry about the master plan, uh, are we gonna have? Presentations. Of. To indicate to the committee which direction we're going. Not for approval, just a general presentation of here we are as far as master plan.
I, what I understand, after you guys meet, then it's gonna be brought upon the planning board first, and then it'll be explained to us, and then put everything together, which then gets forwarded to the county committee. But there'll be, there is gonna be public comment, I know that. There's supposed to be two meetings, I believe, is what the, the, the grant fund has provided for, I believe. I'm putting in notes out here.
Yes, and I, I would, it's, you know, I would discuss with the committee, but my recommendation is that the, the draft not be made available until the entire planning board has reviewed and discussed it. So you'll have a second subcommittee meeting, then the, the master plan draft, with any amendments will be presented to the entire planning board, and, and then it can be recently released as a draft.
So it will be issued as a draft?
I just wanted to clarify as well, there's been a lot of questions about will the draft be made available, and, you know, the, the subcommittee met, we talked about concept, concepts that we want, so that maybe add to the master plan, convert it on the master plan. The, the planner's next step is really to put pen to paper and turn those concepts into the written word. That not, has not yet happened, so that's why there, there isn't even actually a draft available, a written draft available to present to anybody, even if you want to, but to your point, it makes more sense to kind of have a complete draft and then move to the next step.
And, and apparently, the planning board members should see it first.
Yeah, right. Yeah, I mean, the only reason that, that we're doing this is the subcommittee is, you know, there's a lot of reading, like, you know, it was sixty-some pages, I believe, was the with, with what, what we were given for this first meeting. Uh, and that's just reviewing basically what was done in two thousand and twelve, so that we can understand, you know, what's happened in the past and where we're coming to now.
And to clarify, the subcommittee is Jose Riad, yeah.
And Jose.
And Jose Reyes, so that is less than a farm, and they can, they take no action, right there, right?
Yeah. So all we're doing is really, we're kind of trying to become the experts for the entire board, so that we can understand it and then explain it to all you, uh, as, as we go along.
Yeah, it's easier to do than that.
Yeah.
These are the visuals.
Plus, you know, the planner is only paid for, for certain things, so, but we have to, the problem is, well. And, and can you have a board member, sir?
Yeah, a quick question, Monica, you're gonna be the keeper of these until we meet again?
Yes.
Um, one point of the business data, I don't know, was on the site plan subcommittee. Um, I don't see anything else happening between now and the end of the year. I don't see you replacing this juncture. Um, currently Phil Bellin, Limaderos, Iggy Lorenzo are the three. Is there a board that wanna serve in that capacity at either? I don't know.
Mary, Mary? Come in. Well, um, one more.
Um, I just wanted to remind everybody that we're down to only four more meetings for the rest of the year. Um, and that we don't, I just wanted to remind everybody that we don't have a meeting on the ninth. And, uh, so our next meeting will be the twenty-third, other than that. Um, the other thing is, is that we are now, and everyone on the board has taken their certification, so we're all certified, so, okay.
Very good. You didn't move to the other?
Okay. All those favorites, hi. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Excellent, Nick, Nick, Cara, can I, love?
Hi.
Good night, three cent.
Take care.